We could find our way to our seats. We'll get started, Mr. Potter. We will call the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one Plan Commission meeting to order at seven oh two P. M. Ms. Johnson, if you call, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Callie.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Qualls.
Here.
Ms. Rainey.
Present.
Ms. Shulis is absent, and Ms. Senyard.
Present.
Thank you. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to cook matters of business. God our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Empower your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to approve the agenda. We're going to remove item one. At the request of the applicant for further review, and staff will get it back on.
Like to make motion to approve.
Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis. Sorry, Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Citizens' comments?
There on Sunday night.
Sir, approval of minutes from the August tenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rainey Anderson. Any discussion on the minutes? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. New business. We'll start at item two. PC resolution, PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one. Annexation and zoning Diamond Crest at Fairview, one hundred and fourteen acres, map seventy, parcel zero zero five zero one. Proposed zoning RS fifteen residential, single family. Property owners Anthony Walker, Carl Walker the third, Frank Walker. Applicant Matthew Nicholas, Paramount Imperial Communities LLC, excuse me. Do we have anyone present from Paramount Imperial Communities? Mr. Nicholas Nicholas? Mr. Walker, I see you back there. We'll just count you here if you. Okay.
I'm gonna recuse myself if you're gonna vote on this.
So. Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right, so just to give you an idea what's going on. Oh.
Is your microphone on?
My brothers and I own the property, one hundred and fourteen acres. Uh, we've signed a contract with the developer, and they're gonna put homes there. Uh, and they're looking at to to uh bring the property from the county into Fairview. So right now, we're we're zoned county. It's a mixed-use commercial in that area from the map that they show. Uh, our, my property used to be a commercial, and um basically I live there now. But uh if we move it into the Fairview, it'll give more tax revenue. I won't get any benefit unless it's developed. And we don't, we don't have any water. We have water down to the property, so it could be brought over, but it doesn't have sewer, so they'll have to do a, uh, one of the step systems. So you can see it outlined in blue. I have the corner piece right there next to Pinewood Road and one hundred. So they want to index the rest of the property there. You see in blue. So I, and what their, their idea of putting in the homes is supposed to be really nice development, and uh they'll utilize eight forty to get to Franklin, and the jobs to Nashville will be forty, so it shouldn't be a lot of truck property, I mean, uh, uh, traffic through uh Fairview because of that. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So this parcel is on the, the corner there of Pinewood and and eight or one hundred. You see eight forty there, so it's on the direct intersection down there. The requested zoning is an R fifteen. It's a fifteen thousand square foot lot, and the, the frontage of the lot would be a seventy-five foot minimum. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Think so.
That runs in front of the substation?
There is an electrical station, I think, right there. Yes, ma'am?
That's behind that property. Right.
Substation is closer to the interstate, I think.
In the front there?
How does the RS fifteen fit into the comprehensive plan? Do we know?
As it turns out, yes. Currently, this area would be designated as interchange business slash employment district. Uh, it is just right off of that eight forty interchange uh or intersection. Um, appropriate land uses are the more obvious ones, like the retail, restaurant, office, also a lot industrial. But something that might be fitting for residential would be the multifamily residential. That's also an appropriate land use um for this area. No RS forty or RS fifteen designation is currently set aside for or um appropriate zoning according to our twenty forty plan.
Mr. Butler, I do just want to let you know that that does show a seventy-five foot width for the minimum zone lots for RS fifteen.
Thank you, sir. And so it's in the urban growth boundary. It's not part of the city of Fairview. Currently, it's an annexation and a rezoning request. The urban growth boundary is the future area where Fairview would eventually grow, so that's, that parcel is part of that urban growth area, so it would be a, an MGA one would probably be the current zoning, which is a one acre per lot density, same as in R forty, our traditional. And we've had lots, lots of good discussion about the comp plan tonight, and and that's where the, we have to try and analyze and review. The comp plan is something that we're probably gonna try and revisit yearly um by, you know, every two years or so to try and make sure our plan is falling in place. This one, this area doesn't have sewer capabilities right now, so I don't know, commercial use-wise, how, how beneficial it could be. If it doesn't have a, you know, the sewer, you know, capabilities, the commercial space is gonna be harder right now. Where the residential opportunity has the onsite step system. Is that be correct?
Yes, sir, and we have, although the city can't promote this, and we can't require them to do this, the, a developer who's come in, we've talked to probably four developers on, on this property since it's come up. One thing that we did discuss with them as it related specific to um commercial was the lack of sewer accessibility there, so what we have suggested, whether or not they follow this, and they wouldn't be required to follow it. But what we have suggested um for this development is um them to at least consider overbuilding the onsite step system. Knowing that if they were to overbuild it, then they would have the ability to offer sewer for commercial and retail development at that intersection. So um we tried to think outside the box on this in a little bit. We understand the zoning, the uh RS fifteen, what was brought to the staff was a question of what we thought of the smallest lots that the city would consider for the site would be, and we've heard um townhomes, we've, we've heard everything. And based on what we've heard, I guess, from this first discussion six or eight months ago, um was we thought that the RS fifteen would be the smallest lot that would be considered by the BOC and the city, given the information that we know now. So that's how we arrived at the fifteen thousand square foot lots with the suggestion that if they wanted to increase the value of that property, or at least increase the utilization of that property and the intersection, to consider an overcapacity onsite sewer system that would serve a part of that um corridor.
One thing to note on that as well, uh, the residential transition neighborhood uh right off of that highway one hundred corridor backs up to the properties that border one hundred. With this property having so much depth, part of that was not shown in the twenty forty plan, only the front part. But looking at how the other three parts of the eight forty intersection are surrounded with the residential transition, uh, that does show that the RS fifteen would be proper for that area.
So the, the back, there's some backsides there with the transition designation on the comp plan. Could you just read that transition designation for me?
Yeah, it's uh appropriate land uses, multifamily, single-family, detached and detached, civic and institutional. But the appropriate zoning would be RS fifteen, RS eight, RS five, RM eight with pud. And again, that's not the frontage as shown, but the neighboring properties are shown to have that kind of as a first ring out from that general uh tight area. And so that was another consideration that staff had looked at and made.
Thank you, sir.
I'd love to hear more from the developer if they do come in, but um I, I think it's fine. I mean, I want to see, this is the area that we talked about would have more denser, more affordable things coming up, and so I think fifteen's acceptable. I think there could be a nice mix on it. They have the opportunity to come back with the plan and maybe do townhomes up front and houses in the back and overbuild the sewer. There's a lot of options here. But I think fifteen's, you know, a good density. It's not, this is definitely not a RS forty, RS twenty lot. This is fifteen or smaller, I think.
And that's what, in, in my vision, in the spirit of the plan, when we call out the commercial interchange district, you're calling out your highest density, your highest uses, your highest traffic, uh, you know, so if, in theory, if they overbuild their onsite step system, this could open up an opportunity for some commercial or some other things there that could tie in potentially to, to this tap system to kind of generate that corridor. You hope that everybody that's leaving that site in the morning going to work is taking eight forty to, to go to sixty-five or to forty in another direction, eliminating some traffic and stuff, so it's kind of, in theory, create, this could be kind of the kickoff to that corridor where we, we want to try and direct some development, you know, away from the, the inner area there. Any additional discussion or questions?
Mr. Collins, would we be able to get any sort of like multifamily in an RS fifteen, or would it have to be an RM designation?
RS fifteen would not support or would not allow multifamily.
But they could come, I mean, I guess I feel like they're just trying to get the approval to know what they could do, and then they can move forward with a plan and come back with a different.
Sure, they, if, if they, if, if this is approved tonight, and if it's approved at the, at the BOC level, and they came back and decided, hey, we can get some greater use from this thing, then yes, I think, um, I think right now their question is, it's appetite for the ability to develop the, the property.
That's kind of how I felt about that.
And, and, and I will tell you, when, when we get these questions, um, and Micah has been in on some of these meetings, when um, when a developer comes in and they ask, hey, staff, what do you think could go here? What do you think could go there? What is our opinion generally? Um, my answer to them more often than not is, I don't have the faintest clue. That, that's just the reality of where we are, and I, we're very upfront with that. Given the number of requests for this specific site and trying to forecast what it, what its uses could be, um, we kind of settled on what we thought would be suitable as a middle of the road. Now, if a developer comes back and says, hey, we would like to improve the sewer, do some other things, I think that offers up the discussion. But right now, I know that there's interest in trying to maximize, maximize the site.
I felt like they're just trying to ask if it's viable to buy and develop and do the money investment that's gonna take to come up with a site plan. Cause I, I think back for the backside of the lot, RS fifteen is probably most appropriate, but then at the front, doing a little thing on the front and stuff could be really nice.
You're correct. The, the open, the open corner, i- as you're looking at this, I know that um that site was also brought about for at um Pinewood Road and one hundred. Now, obviously, there's a slope that's downhill a little bit, so there, there are some challenges to that site, but I know there were discussions about making that a, a commercial corner to back this up. So that's when we got into the sewer discussions and how we get there, so we, we've tried to, to put some effort into getting the thought process there, and we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
It is up for sale. It's, it's listed, so if they want to come back and buy that as well, it's, it's available. But uh one time, we used to have an auto body shop there, and some, my grandmother had it developed as a, a commercial building. So, but we live there now in the, in the place. We've turned it into a, a house.
Thank you, sir. And would it be correct, currently without any kind of public sewer access, it would be very difficult to do a multifamily project just because of your septic systems and things that, you wouldn't have the room or the capacity if it was a heavier dense project?
Obviously, the more, the more um units you put on there, obviously, that increases the capacity need for the sewer, so I, I think that's where they were trying to hit on middle, middle ground as well now. Uh, they could be um considering also the ability to overbuild and sell sewer. Now, obviously, that's in agreement with Water Authority of Dixon, but if I'm, if I'm the developer for that site, and I'm looking at the potential to generate revenue based on sewer accessibility offsite or sewer accessibility to residential, I would err on the side of offsite and develop that sewer for that, so.
Like a, a townhome product, I don't know if it would have room for the individual septic tanks in the front or whatever, so it would be, it would be hard to make that use work right now.
Like to make a motion to approve PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one?
Callie Anderson, motion for a positive recommendation. Is there any additional discussion or questions?
Yeah, um, considering that we do want to follow the plan and also hold it loosely, you know, like, you don't want to hold on too tight. So I love what Micah said. This could be a great area. If you look at the areas around it, um, according to the plan, that would be residential transition neighborhood. That would be the next possible um, uh, what designation? So under that residential transition, RS fifteen totally fits in. So I think being a little bit flexible, a little bit more open-handed in this situation, I think is appropriate.
That's good, and I think this is the last parcel in Williamson County before it transitions.
Exactly.
To the next county. So this would kind of be a buffer of, of maybe the future interchange area. Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Sorry, Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Move to item, new business item three, PC resolution, PC thirty-eight twenty-one, rezoning the row at Jones Lane. Six acres, map forty-two, parcel zero six nine zero zero. Current zoning RS forty residential, single family. Proposed zoning RS fifteen residential, single family. Property owner James Jones, applicant Brent Fox, Binning Chestnut Construction. Mr. Fox, I see you hiding back there if you want to join us. If you just want, yeah, give us a brief summary of what you're planning here.
So do y'all, do y'all have this lot layout?
We do have it, yes, sir.
Okay.
You emailed it.
Okay, so we're just basically trying to get that zoning to accommodate being able to maximize that, uh, that front field there to get as many lots in there as we can without getting over into that floodplain or being in that buffer in the back. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing as many lots as the zoning would allow for, but the zoning would give us that width that we need to kind of maximize that uh up front.
So this area is Jones Lane intersects Fairview Boulevard up there. I think Stevens Auto would be up on the corner there across the intersection, just to kind of give you where you are.
How many, how many do you plan on building on it?
Uh, we've got it planned for eight right now.
And what would be the, what would be the breakdown of the, those lot sizes?
Uh, the lot sizes? I think the smallest one is about seventeen thousand. They go up to about twenty. Excuse me, the, so several of them are fifteen thousand uh square foot lots, and then two of them are twenty. I guess that eighth one, if we include that rear area, that'd be a, almost a three acre lot back there in the, in the rear.
I mean, I have it on the screen, but it was, the concept plan had a road on the north side of the property there, and then lots on the south side coming out. I think there were seven across the bottom, and then the back section was an eighth lot.
Right.
In the open area back there, past the creek and the stream. It would be off of Jones Lane.
Jones Lane, yeah.
It's not all one hundred. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, the twenty forty plan guides us that this should be R twenty, the smallest?
That's correct.
Additional questions? Then, the, the future plan calls out a legacy neighborhood residential medium, which is single-family detached, medium to large lot, single-use developments, and RS forty and R twenty is what the, the legacy neighborhood residential area is.
Mm-hmm. I think the, the reason we're asking for that zoning is to be able to get a few more lots in there, but we're still not gonna put, you know, twelve or fifteen in there, which is what the zoning would allow for, but um.
I think the, the biggest thing would be the lot widths, where a, an R fifteen, you can be seventy-five foot wide, and R twenty, you can be a hundred foot wide.
Right.
So you capture a, a different lot on that width there.
Sure.
Also, the area just north, northwest of this would be transition corridor, and those would be, appropriate zoning would be RS forty. Those are single-family detached residential, deep setbacks. That type of feel. So to then, one lot away from that, have RS fifteen, that would be a considerable jump from the transition corridor designation. I just don't feel like RS fifteen really fits as much, but appropriate zoning would be R twenty, so that's an option as well.
What is it, what is the zoning of that new development that's right up Old Nashville there?
Otter Creek is an R twenty, traditional. Pennic Place is a an R eight pud, maybe. Um, it's.
I believe it's RS fifteen pud.
RS fifteen pud. It was an older, older development, yeah.
So Otter Creek is an RS fifteen. Is that what you said, Micah?
Otter Creek is an R twenty standalone.
Okay.
The Pennic, Pennic Place across the street is the R fifteen pud.
Okay.
Pennic Place kind of stands out when you drive by it right there. It doesn't really fit the neighborhood.
Additional discussions or questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Before, go ahead.
You got some discussion? I think he was gonna make a motion. Let me see what you got.
No, I was just gonna say, before we make a motion, um, it seems like, just judging by your body language, that you're receptive to an R twenty designation as opposed to an RS fifteen. Is that correct?
I would be if, but I would like it not to change the lot count.
I don't know what the math would look like on that.
Well, it would, it, all those lots would grow by twenty-five feet wide, so we would probably lose one or two of those lots doing that.
And you only have how many now?
Eight.
And my understanding could correctly that seven of those will be one size, and then the eighth one will include that wooded area?
Yes, the, the back lot will be about two and a half acres.
And what's, what's the, the reason behind that?
Just the topography, and it, there's a floodplain that runs through it. It doesn't really make sense to.
So it's not really usable land?
Or the road crossing over the stream would be a, a problem.
Very expensive, yeah. Sorry.
Have you had any discussions with neighbors?
Nope.
Okay.
Sullivan, you got something for us?
Uh, just quick. Generally, for a straight rezoning, uh, I try to hold off of giving what the design would be for a neighborhood because the confusion of voting for a neighborhood versus for a zoning is there. Uh, with this, having that stream buffer through there, uh, we didn't decide to include that with it as a, um, just a visual of what the, what the reason is for wanting that, and that was something that Mr. Fox had discussed, was to keep away from that stream buffer. Uh, that is why I decided to include that. Uh, so that's, uh, just for clarification, it's not the voting of the lots, but voting for the zoning tonight, and that was the reason that was included.
Right. Sir.
So, Mr. Collins, procedurally, what would it look like if he were to decide to bring forth a R twenty designation instead of an RS fifteen?
An issue middle or?
Would we just not take a vote tonight, and then he'd rescind, reapply, and come back? Like, what does that look like?
Assuming that was his request, then um he would have to withdraw his submission. He could do that verbally, withdraw the, the application for the RS fifteen, and then resubmit um whichever one he, he chose to submit.
But he wouldn't be able to do that in this moment if he wanted to.
He wouldn't be able to do to change his mind from an R fifteen to an R twenty?
Correct.
I don't believe that would be appropriate because of advertising, every other thing that goes into that.
Okay.
I think that would have to be a separate, a separate submission.
Okay.
He could withdraw it now, or you, or you can vote on it now. Roll the dice.
Just out of curiosity, what uh size and style homes are you planning on putting on the property?
Typically, when we build out here, it's something between a two thousand and twenty-eight hundred square foot, three or four bedroom home. We built the homes, I don't know if you're familiar with um the intersection of uh Fernvale and Hunting Camp. That little corner right there, that's some of our product there. Um, so something similar, maybe a little larger than that.
Those lots are a little bit bigger than what you're proposing today, though, right? Or are they about the same?
I don't think so. I think.
I thought they were deeper than what they look like on the front.
It was, there were four lots on two point two acres right there, I think. I didn't rezone that. I just bought it, so. But some, some type of similar product to that would be what we would.
Few would be about half acre lots, and we're asking for smaller than that.
Okay. And maybe that seems smaller because of some of the topography there.
Yeah, the, I mean, I understand what you're trying to avoid in the topography, but that RS twenty would be that designation roughly that we're asking for, is that same lot size? I think that's more appropriate for the area. I know when you come down the road, you do have Pennic, Paddock, Pennic Place? And then you do have some of Tim Ingram's, you know, like those townhomes and stuff, but we didn't approve those, or most of the people on this board weren't part of approving those.
Right.
Any additional discussion, or anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve.
I'll second.
Anderson, recommendation for a positive recommendation, and Quall, second. Any additional discussion or questions?
Yeah, like I said, I, I wouldn't be consistent with myself if, if I didn't in the same evening bring up the comprehensive plan and how this does not fit our current plan.
Okay.
Um, not only that, but it is jarring because it would be right next to that transitional area. It's one acre lots. So this is below the, the minimum range that we have for that area. So this is below the, the minimum range that we have for that area.
Anything else? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
No.
Mr. Callie?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, guys.
Go to reports for discussion and information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
I have nothing tonight.
City attorney, Mr. Potter. And city manager, Scotty Collins.
Yes, sir. Just one, thank you for getting that correct. Just one, just one item for you tonight. As you're, as you're aware, we're, we're growing pretty quickly. We have a lot going on and we're, we're blessed. There are a lot of communities that like to be Fairview today. So as a part of that, we, we are making an effort to not repeat Fairview's past. And we're, we're in this kind of, this odd area where adding staff can be problematic. Operationally, not adding staff can be problematic for our community for years to come. So we have added a second engineer to our engineering department. As you're aware, we, we had contract engineer services for, for Fairview's history. Kevin came on full-time in January and started immediately behind on where we were. So in an effort to get ahead of all of the work that we know we have coming and to let the community know that we are putting an effort into building Fairview's future correctly for all of the development that we have coming through. We have a staff engineer, Sarah.
Toddie.
Sarah Toddie. No relation to any, any Toddie. I'm here in Fairview. But Sarah Toddie is an associate engineer with the city of Spring Hill. We went through the process, comes very highly recommended. We cannot wait to have her on staff. She'll start on October 4th. And Sarah will start out with most of our stormwater work and our, and the ground inspections for the subdivision work that we have going. So we're trying to get ahead of that curve. That's not an expense that we were looking to have in this year's budget, but it was an opportunity for us to fill a position that we know we're going to grow into. So we'll have Sarah on board pretty quickly. We're excited to have her here and we look forward to being able to report back to the community that we are continuing to develop their best interest and make sure that we follow that as we go through everything we do to develop the future growth and appearance of our city. So outside of that, thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commission members. Mr. McDonald?
I just wanted to make a mention of the disaster that took place a few weeks ago in Waverly. I know we've had some time for that to be kind of forgotten about. And in this world, everything seems to come at us so fast, it's hard to keep track of what happened last week. I was just out there today and that place is in no way, shape, or form recovered. However, a lot of the volunteers and a lot of the aid that was originally there immediately following the disaster has gone away. Either volunteers just aren't showing up as often as they, as they are needed or the hurricane draws funds and, and time away from Waverly. So just wanted to remind everybody that that's a serious situation over there. And if you have time to take a couple hours and go over there and help people out, there is so many people who really, really need it. And I mean, there's areas of that city that look like the disaster hit yesterday. So just keep that in mind, just as a reminder. That's all.
Sir. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I guess I have two things. The first is, it's an apology for possibly coming off as abrasive or angry, right? Truth is, I am passionate. I'm really passionate about what we do here because it's important, right? We have a lot of responsibility on our shoulders, on this board. So yeah, sometimes I get ramped up and it comes across as possibly aggressive. But it's not. I just love this town and I care for the future of it. The other thing is, I don't feel like us as a, as a board are entirely on the same page as to what our role is, what our responsibilities are, what we're actually supposed to do when we're up here. What is our guideline? What do we make our decisions based off of? It seems like we're, we're split, if not, you know, 50/50, then, then at least two different ways. It would be beneficial in my eyes for us to have a, a work session of some sort, called a team meeting, something, to where we can all get on the same page as a team, as a board, on what our role is as a planning commission. Yeah. So I don't know what would take to do such a thing, but I think it would be beneficial. Instead of us bickering and going back and forth and seeming like we're butting heads up here, if we were all on the same page on understanding what our role is and having some sort of a guideline as to like how we make decisions and what we base decisions off of.
But I think we can visit that. Just is always good for, for training and things. But I think some, some good, healthy discussion is always good too, just to kind of see both sides. And so I think, but we can visit putting something together as a workshop or work session just to kind of revamp the role of the planning commission and things. I think that's good. Ms. Senyard?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Shulis was out tonight. She did let us know. Just so everyone knows. Mr. Callie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Sir, the birthday girl, Ms. Qualls? Happy birthday. Mayor Rainey?
We could sing. Just to add to Mr. McDonald's information, I know that the Red Cross pulled out of Waverly today and they were actively feeding 400 people. So they're scrambling at this point in time to feed, continue to feed those people.
Mr. Anderson?
While we had our meeting tonight, Fairview Middle School and the Fairview High School band did a commemorative for the 13 gentlemen and ladies that were killed in Afghanistan. And they had a, a service for them and American Legion participated. I wish that could have been there tonight because it's a very important thing. They are collecting money under the Gold Star banner, which is for parents and wives of fallen soldiers. So if you can contribute, it would be very, very helpful.
Sir, and I have nothing further this evening. My entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.